Let's get started. Uh, let's get started with a roll call, please. Uh, Nicole?
Mr. Armenter. Ms. Barrios.
Here.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Casalot.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Valencia Jones.
Here.
Ms. Jessica Jones. Mr. LaGuard.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Ms. Slaughter.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Starnes. Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Ms. Werner.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Dr. Gonzalez, we have a call to begin.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Jones, can I ask for an invocation from you, please?
Let's bow our heads, please, in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us here today, this group of educators and volunteers. Please give us the wisdom and the guidance as we go about the business of picking our next leader. We ask you to bless us and to keep us in your dear son's holy name. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, can we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please stand face. I did not see an American flag. There it is on cue. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to your republic, to its stand, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, I think you have all received the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Are there any comments about the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Minutes are approved then. As you all know, we are here to consider candidates, uh, that, uh, applications for candidates who have submitted those. Now, um, uh, we have received a couple of names in the last, uh, in the last couple of days after the formal close of the application deadline. And, uh, this, uh, was in, in part due to, um, President, interim President Gallagher, uh, saying that he was not going to run. So we need to decide whether we want to consider these names in the, uh, for consideration. So, uh, can I have some discussion about this? Any motion? If not?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we accept all names or the nominations received yesterday, um, and then close the nominations.
Any discussion, please?
I, I would like to clarify a patient role and because we have, I think our objective for today is to try to get to three to six, bring them to interviews. Uh, at least on my list, there are multiples of that number of candidates. So it would be more appropriate that we actually elevate individual candidates that we would like to actually bring back for, that we would actually like to bring in for interviews which are scheduled for Monday and Tuesday of next week.
That will be what we will do afterwards. The question is whether, uh, we consider all the names who have applied, even the ones who have applied after the deadline, or if we exclude the names who have applied after the deadline. And the motion is to, uh, consider those names too.
Was there a second?
Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
Thank you.
A question. Wasn't the position announcement, did it not say that applicants would be still open until the job was filled? That there'd be the possibility that it would go beyond the time of right now?
Yeah, yes, it, it did, Dr. Clark.
I personally would like to see the timeframe remain open. It's not that I expect any candidate to come forward and it's not that I, but to, to abide by what the, what we said when we advertised.
What, what I would simply do is offer a friendly amendment, um, to the motion just to make it to accept all nominations submitted for consideration.
Without specifying?
Without, without closing nominations. That would affect what you're trying to do, Dr. Clark.
That, that's a good point. So the-
So if you, if you would just offer that friendly amendment, that would affect that purpose.
So the motion as amended then is to accept the names who have, uh, applied after the, the formal deadline in the, in the ad without closing the date or any other nominations. So is, is the motion still seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's vote on this. Uh, Nicole, could you please, uh, call the votes?
Mr. Armenter. Ms. Barrios.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Casalot.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Valencia Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Jessica Jones. Mr. LaGuard.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Ms. Slaughter.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes. Ms. Wagner.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Werner.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
We have 15 yeas and none opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole.
Madam Chair, could I make a suggestion?
Please.
When people are, are talking, if they could just move their mask down a bit, maybe it's my age and, and my poor hearing, but I'm, I'm having a hard time through the mask understanding what everyone's saying, so.
Okay, I'll try my best to. Thank you. Well, um, as I mentioned, uh, the, uh, our committee chair is on his way here and I would like him to be here in the discussion, but maybe I can, uh, start relating, uh, what we, uh, want to accomplish in this meeting. We want to, uh, prepare a list of names to interview next week. Those interviews will, uh, be, uh, with the committee meeting in person here, uh, like we are doing now. And the candidates, uh, being interviewed virtually and this, this will be, uh, these interviews will be streamed as far as I know. Is, Nicole, can you confirm that? There will not be.
I'm sorry, can one something about that?
The, the first round of interviews is intended to be virtual.
Virtual.
Yes, for all of the candidates. Um, the search, the search consultants have indicated that we should not blend them, even though some candidates may be local and some candidates may not, because it would be unfair to the candidates that don't come in person if we give them that option. So we need to do them all the same way. And then we are anticipating that the final interviews before the board would actually be in person. And those would include campus visits.
That's right. Uh, my question was whether those were going to be private or streamed.
The, the interviews will be public, they will be streamed. And generally in our presidential searches, a small component of the interview is in executive session so that questions about individuals' background or issues that we may learn about can be asked. Those are permissible in executive session. So, so each candidate will have a public interview and depending upon what we want to ask, there may be a small component in executive session.
That's right. And this will be done, um, uh, as a preliminary schedule next week. Um, if possible, Monday and Tuesday, as I understand.
Right now, we have the 26th and 27th blocked off on our calendars.
So please make sure you, you all block it in your calendars. This is very, very important.
And, and one other piece of information as you go into consideration of the candidates is the search consultants explained to us, we could probably cover about three to four a day. Maybe more if we had to, but we have two days, which means, you know, the maximum you'd want to try to do would be six to eight.
Mr. DeCure, will the search committee be joining, uh, by Zoom as well then?
Yes, yes. In fact, I was spec, expecting them. Are they on? I think they're on now.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, for us members of the search committee, will we be in person on Monday?
Yes, yes. The search committee is expected to be in person Monday and Tuesday.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. So the, the search, the, the search firm, uh, Parker will be, uh, the people in Parker who are on Zoom now will be on Zoom also, uh, Monday and Tuesday.
I believe they have been here. They're about to appear on the screen.
Dr. Gonzalez, we are, um, here.
Here.
Okay. Great, yes, I saw.
Laurie, you, you guys just appeared on screen for the first time. They didn't know you were here.
I saw you on Nicole's screen, so I had advanced information. Okay, so the goal again is, uh, for today, uh, to discuss names we want to advance for these interviews. We don't want to, uh, discuss all the names in, in the applications we've received. We only need to advance the ones that, uh, that we want to interview, uh, next week. Again, um, I would like to, uh, perhaps take a 15-minute break to wait for, um, Mr. Williams to join us. I think it is very important that he joins us and-
Yeah, Dr. Gonzalez, but before we break, one of the things since, um, we're meeting in public is you might want to have, uh, Ms. Wilder explain the work they did to gather the pool so that the public can understand, you know, we, we, we hired them, they're very well established in this field and they did a lot of work to assemble a pool for us. So you might want to have her take five minutes and just give us an overview of what she did.
Yes, that's a very good idea. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't take the time to do that. But Laurie, please, if you could go ahead and tell us about, um, the search and, uh, and the results of the search in your opinion, yes. Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And, uh, Winston, I appreciate that. I think it's always very important for a committee to kind of get a sense of where you've been before they begin the process of determining who those candidates they'd like to move forward with. So let me just give a, a little bit of a sense of, of what this committee has been doing. So this is a, a day that's an important day where you begin the process of making decisions as to how you and who, who you would like to interview as we go forward. Um, the first time we met you was on November 20th and we had a search committee meeting and we really discussed timing and process. We listened a great deal about what you were looking for in candidates and what the opportunities and challenges are going forward for LSU. Um, as you all remember, the week of November 30th, we held extensive listening sessions. We met with various constituency groups from students, faculty, staff, uh, community members, alumni, to really get a sense about what is important in the next leader for LSU. Based on that, a position description was developed as well as advertising. Advertising took place in January and February of this year, 2021. And in December of last year, we, uh, went out into the market to really try to recruit a strong, diverse pool of candidates for your consideration. We've talked consistently about where candidates come from in searches like this. And we've talked about academic leaders that are working at benchmark and aspirational institutions, uh, to LSU and to your system as a whole. We've talked about individuals who may come from federal or national public service type positions. Uh, we talked a lot about the fact that you may see military leaders that would be a part of this process. And then you might see people who are local from either a nonprofit corporate background, but are local to, uh, both your region, um, or as, as well as your state. And so I think that has been consistent as we've reached out. We've reached out to over 500-plus individuals to determine their personal interest in this opportunity, to solicit recommendations and nominations of other individuals that we might discuss this position with. Uh, the one thing I will tell you that we have learned consistently is, uh, the, about the importance of this role, the importance of LSU as a whole, uh, to the, the greater good of the state of Louisiana, as well as your, your region in this country. And so we've been excited about this opportunity and the impact that the next president can continue to have. As we've discussed previously, uh, there have been concerns in the marketplace. We went out and as we recruited individuals, uh, concerns were there. Uh, the process always is a concern as it relates to the open nature of a search process, uh, the public exposure of individuals who are gainfully employed, happy where they are today, and really cannot take that risk of being a candidate in a search that is open in public from conversations like you're going to have today, as well as their materials. We've consistently talked about the complexity of the position, the position of president, as well as the chancellor of the Baton Rouge campus and what that, uh, meant to potential candidates in the marketplace. That was a concern that some had as it relates to scope and scale and, and how does a position of provost or dean or others, how does that step up into that large role with such an influence? Obviously, you know, since we started this search, there's been a lot of conversation as it relates to Title IX, uh, a lot of conversations as it relates to LSU in general, throughout the public, um, and the media. And that has created issues for potential candidates as well. We've been consistent in having that con- conversation and dialogue, uh, that that is a concern on top of an open process. So what we have done is we've gone as aggressively as we possibly can to look at those candidates that are willing under the situation that you are today and in the process that you have to become a formal process, a candidate in this search. We were informed that you all had a meeting on April 10th. Uh, that April 10th meeting was to really make a decision as it relates to moving forward with the process. Uh, you all voted to move forward with that process and, um, gave us a timeline that will address that you wanted to move forward. We immediately on that day began to contact candidates to explain the timing. Uh, we've talked today about the 26th and 27th, a meeting today. We began to tell candidates that this was the time that they had to make a decision as to whether or not they were going to be a public candidate in this search. Uh, April 21st, you all received access to a candidate materials, uh, to those who have formally submitted their materials for consideration. Uh, we have had a number of, of potential candidates that we hope would commit, um, but unfortunately have not done that for various reasons. So today you are considering 23 candidates that have officially submitted their materials for your consideration. And again, uh, when, um, your chairman gets here and we get started again, we could talk about the best way to do that. Uh, we have to remember that these conversations are important, but these are also people's lives. And so we are dealing with people who have positions today, um, who are in jeopardy as it relates to being a public candidate, but they feel so strongly about the opportunity at LSU that they're willing to do that. So we could talk a little bit about that, Dr. Gonzalez, as we move forward. But that gives you a sense of kind of what's been done so far. I know you all did a extensive amount of work prior to us even being involved in the early, uh, late November. Uh, so I commend you on the efforts that you all have put into the success of this search. So, uh, I'll stop right now, right there, and we'll see where we are as it relates to the chairman and, and a break you might want to take.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from members of the committee to the search firm, to Laurie? Well, Laurie, again, I want to thank, uh, rather than ask you more questions, I want to thank you for, for the very hard work that you have done under very challenging circumstances and producing a list that, uh, from which I think we will, uh, I know we will find many names that we will, we will want to interview, uh, next week.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Very common. Having been a, uh, academic dean for 28 years before becoming the chancellor of LSU Shreveport in 2014, uh, I had the opportunity to deal with a number of search firms around the country, either to be a reference, uh, or in the case, applying for LSU Shreveport. Uh, the firm that was hired is a terrific firm, very, very highly respected and recognized, a leading firm in the country. And I have been very impressed by looking at the work that they have done. I think we all would like to have seen a deeper list, longer list perhaps, but the work that they have done is really important, valuable work. And I think that we should recognize the fact that it, that that kind of work has gone into the, to the pool of candidates that'll be released to the public today to know that we have some, some excellent people on that list that's been brought forward for our consideration. And, and that if there might be thoughts of other kinds of people that might be on the list, Laurie talked about the challenges, but I don't believe it's because of their efforts and what they have done. I think LSU has been well-served and I just want to thank them for what they've done and bring you forward.
Thank you. That, that is very true. Any other comments or questions? Okay, let's take, um- I'm sorry? I think we do.
I'm gonna step out and call him. He was finishing a trial in the 19th JDC, actually in closing arguments at about 2:30 and, and we had expected it to be done. So I'm gonna step out and try to reach out to him and see where they are. Yeah, yeah. Let, let me take about five minutes and I'll try to get you an estimate.
Okay, but let's, uh, let's say we are on a break now, so we don't, um, we don't discuss, uh, during the session any, any longer, until we reconvene. Until we reconvene.
Got it.
He wasn't here that year, so we need to...
Okay.
He wasn't happy with the year.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I would like to call the meeting of the LSU Presidential Research Committee to recall it. I guess it's been called to order already, but given that there are now a couple more committee members present, including myself, Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll again?
Mr. Armenter. Ms. Barrios.
Here.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Casalot.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Valencia Jones.
Here.
Ms. Jessica Jones.
Ms. LaBord.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Ms. Slaughter.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Starnt.
Here.
Ms. Wagner.
Here.
Ms. Werner.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
There is a form.
Thank you. And again, to clarify, I'm not calling the order. I'm resuming from recess. Am I correct, Ms. Griffith, we've done all the formalities?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First, let me, I won't belabor the point because I'm already late, but I do want to personally apologize to each and every one of you for the hour being so late before I could get here. As y'all know, my day job is being a lawyer, and I'm in a jury trial right now, and jury trials can be unpredictable. And although we were supposed to finish at noon today, we did not finish until 3:30, and I literally left there. I got special permission from the judge. Thank you, Judge Kelly. I got special permission from the judge to leave the courtroom even before the jury was finished being instructed and going to deliberate. So I did try to get here as quickly as I could, as soon as I finished the closing argument. So the judge wouldn't let me out before now, and so I thank each of you for your patience. I really, really appreciate it, and it was truly and completely unavoidable. All right, I don't have a paper copy of the agenda. Ms. Griffith, what's the next, what's the next item on the agenda that we have not gotten to?
It's consideration of the candidates.
Thank you. As everyone knows, we have now seen information from several candidates who have expressed interest in the position as president of the LSU system. The purpose of our meeting today is to decide which of the roughly 23 candidates we would like to bring in for interviews. So at this time, I would open the floor to hear suggestions. I'd like to keep in mind, we, the committee, can do whatever we want. The recommendation from the professionals has been that a number of between six and eight people would be manageable for interviews. So as we pick a slate, it can be as few or as many as we want, but our professional search firm thought that somewhere between six and eight is a manageable number for the interviews that we want to conduct, and the thorough nature of the interviews that we want to conduct. So at this time, I would open up the floor. Is, would anyone like to propose a candidate to be interviewed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forward a name, please.
Absolutely.
Dean Ruston M. Moore, professor and dean at the College of Veterinary Medicine, the Ohio State University.
Okay.
Do you wish me to say any more, or do I stop?
I think everyone's been provided with the candidate materials. Feel free to say whatever you'd like about the candidate, though.
I will say that, as I have shared with the group, having been an academic dean for 28 years, it's a big challenge when you go from being a dean to something, being a chancellor or president. It's a big challenge. This gentleman, however, has been at LSU before. He was here from '96 through 2005. He understands the university. He knows this state, the great state of Louisiana. But he's head of a veterinary college, and that's a complex college. And we have two health science centers, and I think that having some understanding of that, and he also has an excellent research record, something of which is important to the research faculty and to our faculty on all of the campuses, but in particular to the flagship. And so he has a strong, very strong background, and I put him forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Griffith, could you give me something to write with, please? Just so I can keep track of things. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Chancellor Clark has provided something. Thank you. All right.
And Chairman Williams, I might just say here to help you, you know, from a process standpoint, as individuals are brought forward for a decision as to whether or not you'd like to invite them in for the first interview, just want to remind the committee that you're not selecting the next president today. You're just selecting who do you want to learn more about. I think there's, that's an important aspect of this. And so, you know, if there is any dialogue or support from that perspective, what we're looking for today is a consensus. Is there a consensus that I'd like to bring this individual in for a first-round interview to ask more questions, to learn more about? I just wanted to add that as well. Chairman Williams.
Thank you. And I think that's an important point to make. We are all professionals, and we take our duty very seriously on this committee. At this early stage, I think it would be unfair to candidates to really dig deep into what's going on. I think Ms. Wilder is absolutely right, that we need to identify those persons who we'd like to talk to more, but anything beyond that would just be unfair to the candidates and the process until we get deeper into things. So thank you. What we'll do, unless, Ms. Wilder, you tell me different, maybe we'll have discussion, and we'll hear, we'll see how many folks we get through this process before we decide conclusively, you know? So we'll just, we'll mark that for now. And then I'll pass.
I think that works.
Okay, thank you.
Then you can, you can really just get the consensus as it relates to the totality of the slate.
Yes, yes. I almost said, "Yes, Your Honor." Good Lord. Have it. Yes. Yes, Ms. Wilder. Okay, so Chancellor Clark, give me that name again, please.
Dr. Ruston Moore.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. All right. Who else can we hear from to advance a candidate? Yes, ma'am.
I'm interested in hearing more from Dr. Lawrence Alexander.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Nelson. And then Ms. Werner.
I'd like to propose Mr. Jay Darden.
Okay. Ms., give me one second. Vice Chair Gonzalez, Ms. Werner. Had I a hand up? Ms. Werner?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward Dr. Mary Ann Rankin.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes, I supported the names, of course, proposed already, but I would also like to hear from Kelvin Drogomire.
One, who's that?
Kelvin, Dr. Kelvin Drogomire.
Yes. All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Casalot.
Chairman, I would bring forward, if it's okay, two names, the military folks, General Ron Clark and former General Jeff Tally. Any suggestions?
All right. I will pause here just to... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. LaBord, I missed you. My apologies, sir.
I feel that we should also hear from Dr. Jim Henderson.
Yes. Thank you for that. Oh, I thought you had something else. Okay. At this time, let me, let me let everybody know who we've got on the list. Rusty Moore. Lawrence Alexander. Jay Darden. Mary Ann Rankin. Ron Clark. Jeff Tally, Jim Henderson, and I'm missing one. Was it Kelvin? Kelvin Drogomire?
D-R-O.
Drogomire.
Yeah, 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 Drogomire. Thank you. Okay. All right. Those are eight candidates that we have advanced, that we'd like to hear more about. Advance is probably the wrong term. Anyone else? Anyone else that anybody would like to offer? This is the fewest words Dusty Johnson has ever said. Anybody else? All right. Going once. I'll call again. Any other names that we want to advance? Last call. Anyone else that we want to advance for interview? All right. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there looks to be a comment in the chat that asked about, I'm not sure who Johanna is. Nicole, can you confirm who Johanna Pasada is?
General Counsel at Winston.
Okay. We just want to make sure Jeff Tally was a part of that list. I believe that Clarence Rick had placed two Ron Clark. 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 Two Ron Clark.[299.42]
He wasn't here that year, so we need to... He was not here that year.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I would like to call the meeting of the LSU Presidential Search Committee to recall it. I guess it's been called to order already, but given that there are now a couple more committee members present, including myself, Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll again?
Mr. Armenter?
Ms. Barrios?
Here.
Mr. Campbell? Mr. Casalot?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Valencia Jones?
Here.
Ms. Jessica Jones? Mr. LaBord?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Slaughter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
There is a form.
Thank you. And again, to clarify, I'm not calling to order. I'm resuming from recess. Am I correct? Ms. Griffith, we've done all the formalities?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First, let me, I won't belabor the point because I'm already late, but I do want to personally apologize to each and every one of you for the hour being so late before I could get here. As y'all know, my day job is being a lawyer, and I'm in a jury trial right now, and jury trials can be unpredictable. And although we were supposed to finish at noon today, we did not finish until 3:30. And I literally left there. I got special permission from the judge. Thank you, Judge Kelly. I got special permission from the judge to leave the courtroom even before the jury was finished being instructed and going to deliberate. So I did try to get here as quickly as I could, as soon as I finished the closing argument. So the judge wouldn't let me out before now, and so I thank each of you for your patience. I really, really appreciate it, and it was truly and completely unavoidable. All right, I don't have a paper copy of the agenda. Ms. Griffith, what's the next, what's the next item on the agenda that we have not gotten to?
It's consideration of the candidates.
Thank you. As everyone knows, we have now seen information from several candidates who have expressed interest in the position as president of the LSU system. The purpose of our meeting today is to decide which of the roughly 23 candidates we would like to bring in for interviews. So at this time, I would open the floor to hear suggestions. I'd like to keep in mind, we, the committee, can do whatever we want. The recommendation from the professionals has been that a number of between six and eight people would be manageable for interviews. So as we pick a slate, it can be as few or as many as we want. But our professional search firm thought that somewhere between six and eight is a manageable number for the interviews that we want to conduct and the thorough nature of the interviews that we want to conduct. So at this time, I would open up the floor. Would anyone like to propose a candidate to be interviewed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forward a name, please.
Absolutely.
Dean Ruston M. Moore, professor and dean at the College of Veterinary Medicine, the Ohio State University.
Okay.
Do you wish me to say any more, or do I stop?
I think everyone's been provided with the candidate materials. Feel free to say whatever you'd like about the candidate, though.
I will say that, as I have shared with the group, having been an academic dean for 28 years, it's a big challenge when you go from being a dean to something, being a chancellor or president. It's a big challenge. This gentleman, however, has been at LSU before. He was here from '96 through 2005. He understands the university. He knows this state, the great state of Louisiana. But he's head of a veterinary college, and that's a complex college. And we have two health science centers. And I think that having some understanding of that, and he also has an excellent research record, something of which is important to the research faculty and to our faculty on all of the campuses, but in particular to the flagship. And so he has a strong, very strong background, and I put him forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Griffith, could you give me something to write with, please, just so I can keep track of things? Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Chancellor Clark has provided something. Thank you. All right.
And Chairman Williams, I might just say here to help you, you know, from a process standpoint, as individuals are brought forward for a decision as to whether or not you'd like to invite them in for the first interview, just want to remind the committee that you're not selecting the next president today. You're just selecting who do you want to learn more about. I think that's an important aspect of this. And so, you know, if there is any dialogue or support from that perspective, what we're looking for today is a consensus. Is there a consensus that I'd like to bring this individual in for a first-round interview to ask more questions, to learn more about? I just wanted to add that as well. Chairman Williams?
Thank you. And I think that's an important point to make. We are all professionals, and we take our duty very seriously on this committee. At this early stage, I think it would be unfair to candidates to really dig deep into what's going on. I think Ms. Wilder is absolutely right, that we need to identify those persons who we'd like to talk to more. But anything beyond that would just be unfair to the candidates and the process until we get deeper into things. So thank you. What we'll do, unless, Ms. Wilder, you tell me different, maybe we'll have discussion, and we'll hear, we'll see how many folks we get through this process before we decide conclusively, you know. So we'll just, we'll mark that for now. And then I'll ask...
I think that works.
Okay, thank you.
Then you can, you can really just get the consensus as it relates to the totality of the slate.
Yes, yes. I almost said, "Yes, Your Honor." Good Lord. Have it. Yes, yes, Ms. Wilder. Okay, so Chancellor Clark, give me that name again, please.
Dr. Ruston Moore.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. All right. Who else can we hear from to advance a candidate? Yes, ma'am?
I'm interested in hearing more from Dr. Lawrence Alexander.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Nelson, and then Ms. Werner.
I'd like to propose Mr. Jay Darden.
Okay. Ms., give me one second. Vice Chair Gonzalez, Ms. Werner, had I handled it? Ms. Werner?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward Dr. Mary Ann Rankin.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes, I supported the names, of course, proposed already, but I would also like to hear from Kelvin Drogomire.
One, who's that?
Kelvin.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Kelvin Drogomire.
Yes. All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Casalot.
Chairman, I would bring forward, if it's okay, two names, the military folks, General Ron Clark and former General Jeff Tally. Any suggestions?
All right. I will pause here just to... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. LaBord, I missed you. My apologies, sir.
I feel that we should also hear from Dr. Jim Henderson.
Yes. Thank you for that. Oh, I thought you had something else. Okay. At this time, let me let everybody know who we've got on the list. Make sure I heard. Rusty Moore. Lawrence Alexander. Jay Darden. Mary Ann Rankin. Ron Clark. Jeff Tally, Jim Henderson, and I'm missing one. Was it Kelvin? Kelvin Drogomire?
D-R-O.
Drogomire.
Yeah, 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 Drogomire. Thank you. Okay. All right, those are eight candidates that we have advanced, that we'd like to hear more about. Advance is probably the wrong term. Anyone else? Anyone else that anybody would like to offer? This is the fewest words Lester Johnson has ever said. Anybody else? All right. Going once. I'll call again. Any other names that we want to advance? Last call. Anyone else that we want to advance for interview? All right. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, there looks to be a comment in the chat that asked about, I'm not sure who Johanna is. Nicole, can you confirm who Johanna Pashata is?
A general counsel at Winston.
Okay.
We just want to make sure Jeff Tally was a part of that list. I believe that Clarence Rick had placed two, Ron Clark and Jeff Tally. So I'm not sure if I heard you say that as one of the eight. So Portia, do you think you could just very quickly confirm those eight? Just tell us name and title, institution, and then that way we'll make sure we're all in sync here?
Okay. Lawrence Alexander.
And I do have, just, hold on before you begin, just so we're clear. I do have, I do want to do that, but I have, I have eight down here, and I've got eight checkmarks. I believe we've captured it, but go ahead, please.
Perfect. I just want to make sure this comment in the chat, we got that right?
Absolutely.
All right, we're going in alphabetical order. Dr. Lawrence Alexander, professor and chancellor, the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. We have Mr. Ronald Clark, major general and chief of staff, the United States Indo-Pacific Command, United States Army. We have Jay Darden, Mr. Jay Darden, commissioner, the Division of Administration, state of Louisiana. We have Dr. Kelvin Drogomire, former director, White House Office of Science and Technology Policy, United States Federal Government. We have Dr. Jim Henderson, system president and chief executive officer, the University of Louisiana System. We have Dr. Ruston M. Moore, professor and dean, College of Veterinary Medicine, the Ohio State University. Dr. Mary Ann Rankin, professor and former senior vice president and provost, the University of Maryland College Park. And then we have lieutenant general, retired Jeffrey Tally, who's the president and CEO of the P3I Group LLC.
Thanks, Portia.
Thank you. And does your number total eight?
It does.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we schedule interviews with these eight persons who have expressed interest in the position.
I would move it.
It's been moved by Chair-elect of the Board of Supervisors, Remy Starnes, second by Mr. Clarence Casalot. Nicole Griffith, would you please conduct a voice vote?
All right, Mr. Armenter? Ms. Barrios?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell? Mr. Casalot?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Valencia Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Jessica Jones? Mr. LaBord?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, 17 yays, none opposed.
Thank you. All right. At this time, what I'd like to do then is, Ms. Griffith, at the conclusion of this meeting, if you would... We have dates set aside. I want to poll the committee membership about availability for the interviews with the dates that we set aside. So as soon as this meeting ends, starting tomorrow, let's do that. I have been disappointed, and I take that on my own shoulders, that we have not communicated some of the logistics of these meetings to you faster. And so I'm going to commit publicly to making sure that we do that out of respect for your schedule. And so I'm going to ask, Ms. Griffith, if you could please start on that tomorrow morning so that hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, we can have an idea about the availability of everyone for the dates we previously set aside for interviews.
Yes, sir.
I'm also interested, frankly, in having a search committee meeting event on a campus other than this one. And so, Ms. Griffith, I would like you to explore the logistics of that. Certainly Alexandria is in the middle of our state. I know Chancellor Clark would love to have us. I love going up there all the time. But I want to explore the feasibility of doing this in another place. If logistically it doesn't work because of flights coming in for interviews or whatever, then just tell me, James, you're crazy, it doesn't work. But barring that, I really have an interest in trying to do some of our activity on another campus, given that this is a system presidency. So please explore that as well. Mr. LaBord?
James, I think all interviews Monday and Tuesday will be virtual, if you assume.
Oh, so the interviews are virtual?
Yes.
On Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, my apologies. Then we, go ahead, Mr. DeCuir?
The committee is expected to be in person, but the candidates will be virtual, and our search consultants have recommended that all the candidates be treated the same.
Understood. That makes sense from a virtual standpoint.
And I have no problem coming down from Shreveport to here, sir. Thank you for your consideration, but...
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, look, if it's inconvenient, I don't want to make it hard on everybody, but I want to be respectful of the other campuses within the system. So the other thing I want to stress for everyone, just because some questions came before this meeting last time, which, again, I'll take on my shoulders as having not done a good enough job communicating. Our ability, virtual attendance for the committee, we are beyond the point in our laws where it is prudent for us to do that. So the ability for public bodies such as ours to meet virtually was under certain limited circumstances. Those circumstances have now shrunk down to the point where they really aren't applicable for our work. And we don't want to do anything for convenience that is inconsistent with the public meeting laws. So unfortunately, it means we do have to conduct all of our business in person as opposed to virtually. We can have witnesses and interview, not witnesses, y'all know what I mean. We can have people there and interviews and all that. But we, the committee, as we're in person to make these very important decisions, need to be in person. So I know it's an inconvenience, but I appreciate everybody's attentiveness to this. The last, by the way, Ms. Griffith, I have a note that nobody's registered for public comment, but you already announced that. Okay. The next comment I want to make is something I just want to say to each of you in person. I'm honored to be a part of this search committee. I know everybody here is honored to be a part of this search committee. And I would hate for anyone to feel like, you know, given some of the publicity surrounding this search, I don't want anyone on this committee to feel like the work of the committee is not what's driving who's going to be the next president of LSU. Rumor, innuendo, backroom speculation, this one saying, "I have the votes," that one saying, "I need the votes," none of that. And I give you my word as the chair of this committee, none of that is going to creep into this process. I don't want to waste anybody's precious time. No one's here for show. No one is here for formality. Parker certainly not here doing their job just for window dressing. And so everybody here has invested a lot of time and valuable time, energy, and effort to try to pick the next president of LSU. And I will assure you, I am not going to be a part of, nor will I allow this committee to be a part of any sideshow or anything that is not consistent with public meeting laws and what the law says about picking our next president. So this is the committee that is going to make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and I intend that to happen without any undue interference or anything else that jeopardizes the integrity of this process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Questions, actually. Since it's now been voted on that we're going to allow other people to apply past the present time, how would they be handled as, considered as candidates? And is there a sort of a structure that we're going to use for these interviews on Monday and Tuesdays? Because it's getting pretty close.
So two, I'll answer both of those. I may punt one of them. But the first one I'll answer is the people who are still applying. What the committee decided, what our committee decided early on when we approved the job description and we improved what our search firm was going to put out into the marketplace, is that we would advertise the position in public as open until filled. And that's consistent with the best practices nationwide. That's consistent with the standards and customs when doing a search like this, just to give the committee and the university complete flexibility to consider all appropriate candidates. At the same time, we had to put a logistical in. We had to come together and meet. We have to pick people to interview. We have to do, we couldn't just say it's open forever. And so we decided that we'd want to take stock this week of where we're at. We wanted to do that today and pick some people to bring in for interviews. As a practical matter, I can't see how this committee would want to select someone who the committee had not interviewed. But again, I'm just one vote on the committee. And so if the whole committee thought something different, I guess we'd deal with that when it came to us. But the reality is, we've been, we've decided on the eight people we're going to interview. There are no more for us to interview. We don't have another public meeting coming up where we could get back together and vote to approve some more interviews. We're not going to do anything by Zoom on the back of a napkin on a telephone in the dark of night. So this is the list of people that we're going to interview. And if something changes where we need to make a change, we'll come back together appropriately in a publicly-called meeting and make the best decision for the university. But I think the structure we have in place gives us some certainty as we move forward.
I'm agreeing with you, sir. Before you came, when you were in court, it sounded to me like we opened it up to a later date until it was filled. Is that not correct? I'm just trying to understand.
That was always, so we didn't open it up until, let me be very clear. We didn't open it up after the fact until filled.
Oh, no, no, I agree.
From the very beginning, the information we put out to the marketplace, and again, once we put something out to the marketplace, it's got LSU's name on it. We have to stand by our word. The information we put out in the marketplace says, "open until filled." So that, again, consistent with best practices in a situation like this, I think we're prudent to do that, just so we, as the committee, don't cut off any avenues for ourselves in selecting the best president. But at the same time, we have decided that this is the schedule we want to keep, and we're not delaying this train any longer.
But if a suitable candidate did happen to apply tomorrow or the day after, what would we do with that application? I guess is what I'm asking hypothetically.
Chairman Williams, if you'd like me just to kind of give a sense of that as well, because I think what you were saying is so critically important. The piece that I think that your chairman has consistently said to us, and we have consistently said to him, is that this is a process that was laid out on a national scale, and the process matters. Outcome is critically important, but process matters. And so if by chance, Dr. Nelson, a candidate was to come in tomorrow, what we would do in that state is we would alert you as search committee members that we have a new candidate willing to go through the process for your consideration. You would then need to have a publicly, as just as Mr. Williams has just said, a public meeting to make a decision, just as you did today, whether or not this committee wants to move forward with that candidate for interviews to take place on Monday and Tuesday of next week. If candidates come in on Sunday, we will do the exact same thing for you to make a decision on Monday and Tuesday if you'd like to invite them in. So the key piece here is consistency of process. And I think that's what your chairman is saying, is that we'll do that. So to be very specific, if someone comes in that wants to go through the process, been outlined, that has been agreed to by this committee and by this board, then we will immediately alert you to their candidacy, and we'll go through a very similar process that we're doing today to make the decision whether or not you'd like to invite them in for interviews on Monday or Tuesday.
Yes.
I've never done that before, I know. Do, to the best of your knowledge, do all eventual candidates have to be vetted by this committee?
Yes, I am not aware, and I don't, let me not say it like a lawyer. The lawyer answer would be, "I'm not aware of any situation where that wouldn't happen." The practical common sense answer is no. No one from the Board of Supervisors, and I happen to sit on the Board of Supervisors, has told me, "Look, y'all bring us a few, and then we're going to find a few here, and we're going to find a few there." The instructions and mandate from the Board of Supervisors, and we've got the Chair-elect sitting to my left, we've got four members here today, has been very clear that they will only consider the candidates that come from this committee. Did I answer both of your questions?
Dr. Nelson, I think you had a second question about process for Monday and Tuesday. So I'd be more than happy to answer. Yeah, I figured you were going to put that one. So very quickly, and I know your chairman has just asked Nicole to do some polling to get your availability. In order to see eight candidates, Winston is exactly correct, you would see four candidates each day. There will be a uniformity to those interviews, and so they will, we'll create a, for this part, you'll be here, the candidates will be zoomed, we'll work through all of that in the process. I anticipate those will be hour-and-15-minute interviews with 15-minute breaks between those interviews. We'll ask you to hold the majority of those two days, because it will be time-consuming. We'll, you know, breaks, we'll have breaks, and we'll have, you know, lunches and those types of things. So you, very quickly, our objective at the end of this meeting, based on your vote, is to call these candidates, these eight candidates that you have selected to move forward with, and we will very quickly get their availability and schedule them. They are aware of these two dates, so we've asked them to hold time on these two dates for interviews in the, if they were selected, ultimately selected. So as soon as you approved those dates last weekend, we, the weekend before, we went back to candidates to say the same thing as well. So it will be a very thorough process with uniform. We want to make sure that you are judging candidates equally, that there is an equity to that process. We'll work through interview questions, and we'll work through that as well with this committee. There'll be an orientation session the first morning on Monday so that we'll go through kind of the logistics of the day. We'll answer any questions that you might have as we proceed, and then we'll be in a position for you to interview those candidates. So just be on the lookout. Very, very quickly, we'll get to scheduling these candidates and moving forward.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Dr. Nelson?
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Tur, can I, can I ask you to clarify what's going to be the process afterwards?
So as we approved last time, we will conduct the interviews on these two days. We've set aside the 30th, April 30th, as the date that this committee will get back together and decide which of the people we've interviewed we want to submit to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. I think we also said, though, given the fact that we now have to interview eight candidates, this may not happen. We talked about potentially, if this went quick enough, we could maybe make the decision on who to advance on the day of the interviews. But with eight candidates, that doesn't sound practical. We can still see just in case. But the plan is, on April 30th, we reconvene and make a decision about which candidates to advance to the Board of Supervisors. No problem. Anyone else? All right. Is there anything else on the agenda for today? Anybody have any other question, comment, or concern they want to bring before the committee? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the LSU Presidential Search Committee. So moved by Dr. Nelson, seconded by Vice Chair Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't hear any opposition. I'm not going to ask for any, anyway. Meeting adjourned.